...in the invitation, then we'll have the pledge of allegiance, our Scotts following the invitation.
Please stand and let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you once more and again to give you thanks, praise, and honor. We thank you for this day that you've made. You said we should rejoice and be glad in it. As we come this evening to conduct the town's business, I pray that you continue to be with us, always helping us to make the right decision for this great town of Spring Lake. I'm praying for our citizens, as well as our employees, as well as our service members. I pray that we always be pleasing to you in everything that we do. In Jesus Christ's name I do pray this evening, amen.
With the troop seven thirteen.
Fall in. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with every just and fair.
Thank you, gentlemen. It's a great job. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda, Alderman Cooper?
Um, I'd like to make a motion to delete, um, item nine A and nine B, so that we can get a little more information on, um, both these.
There's a motion. Alderman Christian.
Second motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we delete items of the new business, nine A and nine B from the agenda. You heard the motion today for the question. Or is there discussion first?
Discussion.
Question. Discussion, go.
On the website, uh, we've already had a presentation about that. Uh, we were on here. And, uh, we should be ready to move forward with that. The, uh, the... I'll leave that alone. That's what they're gonna do.
Alderman Jackson.
I agree with, um, all those men, um, over there. We've seen the presentation of the website. We should be ready to move that.
Um, my concern is that, um, well, first, I wanted to know what we paid for our last website, and I'd also like to know if we sent that out for bid for other contractors, 'cause I feel like we're spending that much money, we need to put it out and put a, you know, put a bid out there for other people to have an opportunity. We are a municipality, and that's normally how we, um, handle that kind of business. So I just think that we shouldn't just, um, have, just have one presentation. I think some other people need to have a chance to, um, offer their services and see what their, what their cost would be.
Alderman Southern.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Ms. Cooper.
Okay. Now, it's time to vote. You heard the motion. Are you ready for the question? All in favor of deleting A and B new business funds this year, make it known by the sign of I?
Aye.
How many was that?
Three.
Three I's. All opposed, sign of N.
N.
Okay, let's, let's just vote again. This, uh, will not get the vote. All in favor, sign of I, please?
Aye, aye, aye.
That's three I's in favor of deleting. All opposed, sign of N.
N.
Okay, so by the vote of three to these two I's, A and B will be deleted from tonight's agenda. Alderman Jackson.
My question is, when would, when would this be brought back up?
Mr. Gerald.
Uh, I just need direction from the board, uh, the ones that didn't approve the A, items A and item B, as to what they're looking for.
Alderman Southern.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As stated, we normally do have three. This type of one, I think, was fifty-seven thousand. So, uh, if you could put your PAF out or whatever, to have others come in, so we can say we are being fair to give them opportunities. And I think we can bring it back to the board, but we've done our due diligence. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That's my question. How long you think it will take for you to do that?
I would think... I would say maybe another month, 'cause I want to have adequate time to get the information out to respect the figures.
Is there any motion to approve your agenda? Alderman Cooper.
I make the motion to approve the agenda with the same correction.
I'm, I'm sorry, ma'am. On, we talked about item A, about a month. What about the item B for the Spring Lake Chamber contract? That won't take a month, will it?
The Spring Lake Chamber contract will not take a month. There are a few addendums that need to be added to that contract for the attorney.
So we're talking about Ms. Boarding maybe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Would need a second for the motion.
I would second.
Actually, I was, I was gonna add, so could I be added to the, for comments at the end?
Can you, can you be added to comments, last word?
Not, I didn't want to take Miss Sutherland's place, but if I could have a moment myself.
Okay, okay. Um, well, that's now the time to, to do that after the second, then I ask for the question.
And then that's when you would do your unread. But, but now we don't have a second.
Alderman Jackson.
I'll second that motion.
You heard the motion. Are you ready for the question?
Question.
Unread.
Um, okay, Mayor, I'd like to request that I have a few moments towards the end before Miss Sutherland, to make a few comments about Vernon Owens.
Okay, so that would essentially be nine, nine D, right, it was? Nine B?
No, actually, it's not. Nine D.
Nine B, okay. Nine B, and then Mr. Christian. Any other unread? All in favor of the, all in favor of the approval of the newly revised agenda? Aye. And one opposed, sign of N. The ayes have it. An approval of the consent items? Alderman Cooper.
I make the motion that we approve the minutes of the February twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen, regular meeting.
Alderman Jackson.
I second that motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the consent items. You heard the motion. Are you ready for the question?
Question.
All in favor of the approval of consent items? Make it known by the sign of I? And opposed by the sign of N. Okay, item seven, the public forum. We have two individuals signed up, uh, Frances McGyver and Adam Fontanias. Send that forward, please. Please. Uh, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Frances McGyver, and my address is one oh five North Mitchell Street, apartment ace, room length C, two eight three, nine zero.
Do you miss me?
I have a question. Is it okay for town officials or elected officials to record on private matters? As a form of harassment? You don't know?
I don't.
Mr. Mayor and commissioners, respectfully, we don't know anything about the facts, um, in the matter that she is apparently referring to. I, I don't suggest that the board engage in a lengthy discussion about whatever it might be, but perhaps refer it to staff.
Which staff would that be? Who would ask me to get the issue resolved, if it's a problem?
Um, on another occasion, the lady, um, at my invitation, um, made an appointment with the manager and me to discuss the matter. Um, that didn't happen.
Okay, may I, now, Jeff, that, I talked to Ms. Cooper in the chamber. They did not think that it was a good idea, because I did not have a witness, someone to, you know, sit in. Doesn't mean a lot of laws being so, and you know that, sir.
Respectfully, I don't, uh, Mr. Mayor.
You haven't even asked to review my evidence that I have, even if have you?
Suggest that the lady be given another opportunity to make an appointment, and please contact Ms. Smith.
Okay, may I have witnesses first? And may I have two board officials, my, my, my presence, Ms. Cooper and Ms., uh...
I wouldn't suggest that it be board members, but...
I feel it should be two board members in there. That is how I feel. I really told Ms. Webb that today, awesome.
Mr. Hankins, he is the town attorney, and we are under his advisement.
Mr. Mayor, what I recommend is that the lady make an appointment with Ms. Smith, with the town manager. Um, I will sit again.
Last time I did it, it did not go well, and I have a witness who can tell you. When she called me, she was like, "I don't care if you come to the meeting," and I, she was really deliberate. I have a witness who's credible, works for the city of Fayetteville, named Steve Dawkins, if you don't believe me.
Mr. Mayor, the appointment was made and not kept, and that's all I know.
But it was, and I told the concerns to the town manager and certain officials, the board members, they, they expressed concern, the chamber and Ms. Cooper herself. By the not being, by not being able to have a witness, that keeps me from being lied on any further.
And can I just say, I did not, I didn't volunteer myself. I just said, I think you should go in there with someone, um, and, you know, so that you have someone who, that, that's what, that's what I said. You should go in there.
Yeah, I think it's entirely appropriate.
But when we told you that, you kept saying no one could be present.
No, no.
Yes, you did. You said only myself could be there.
Respectfully, no, I...
You didn't tell Ms. Janet to tell me that no one could be there but myself. Come on, I'm not trying to be arrogant, I'm just saying.
Mrs. McGyver, the board's attorney had made the statement. He's giving you another chance to come back, so that, uh, is what we will allow. Alderman Jackson.
You, you, you have all the right in the world to have anybody in there, that you want to, but I do not recommend it to be board members, because this is, you, you're talking about board members that have to address whatever issue comes above the board. All the board members need to be there. And for all of us to be there, that means we're, we're out of place. So I advise you to get you two other, um, witnesses and bring them in there, somebody that you trust.
When you drive in, he said no one could come, absolutely. I don't have to lie.
You don't, you don't have to worry about them. All you're doing is now. So now you've got it in front of everybody. Somebody, everybody has heard that you can have the meeting, and bring your two people that you want in the meeting there. And then that way you can settle whatever differences you have. But I wouldn't invite the board members to do that, 'cause if you invite two, you have to invite all, if I, if I'm not mistaken.
I know.
Okay, so that's what, so that's what you need to do. Just go ahead and have your meeting scheduled.
You don't for drinking, or you do?
No, not if you invite, uh, not for different situations. We're gonna have a meeting or whatever, but as stated, you can get your witness, but not necessarily, as long as we don't have a forum.
Got you.
Or you would have a forum.
So it would be a forum, okay. Thank you, Mr. McGyver. All right, I'm satisfied.
Mr. Mayor, let me do this. I sent the lady a letter previously about the prior meeting schedule. I will send another letter. I mean, to tell her how to get the meeting scheduled and make sure...
And you set the meeting up without me having to contact Ms. Janet, 'cause there was confusion there, and there was a witness that was present.
So why didn't you just, after the meeting, just set up with Mr. that, why?
There, no, why are you here, sir?
And do it after?
We have no problem. We got nothing but time and evidence.
That's fine with me. And I'm going to say again.
Yes, sir.
Certainly are, um, you are welcome to bring, uh, one nor as many as two witnesses. I would strongly suggest that they not be members of the board for the reasons that were said.
Got you. That's fine. No way to bring two witnesses. That's fine. That's all that's for. I'm, I'm saying it's fine.
Okay, so let me ask this question. Somebody stated you could set up the meeting now, but so we can make sure we're doing our due diligence and the proper paperwork, please send the letter out so it can be documented.
I, I, I think that's the correct one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Fontanias.
Good evening, Mayor and board members.
Good evening, sir.
I'm right here down in Fontana, I live at forty-seven N T Court in Cameron, North Carolina, and I'm here with my boys from troop seven thirteen, Scouts B S A.
Boys, if you all like to please stand.
These boys put together a hefty amount of work, uh, working with the, uh, Spring Lake Fire Department in order to, uh, raise up a grand of refunds, more than what we had anticipated, in order to help with the safety grant. Um, did I say anything else?
Yes, yes.
So...
Before he flips it, before he flips it, may they all come, sir, and, and, and go on in?
I want the change.
Chief Williams.
They already seen it now. I got to see it. All right, so, we were supposed to raise up, or we wanted to raise up seven hundred and fifty dollars for the safety grant, 'cause that's how much it costs, over a hundred grand approved.
That's correct.
But by the good force of the law, and by the work of these boys, and also the Spring Lake Fire Department, if you want to flip the check, the amount on the check is one thousand, three hundred and thirty, three hundred and thirty-one dollars. And this is all done in one day. One day.
You got it. You all going to join?
Oh. Good job, though. Very good. Good job.
Glad to call you. Thank you very much. I thank you for... Take time on your own, and you can work on things.
Are you working on this too?
Uh, yes, sir. I was there. And I'm the mom of three of the scouts, so...
Go ahead. I asked them to work for me. We're sharing that one day.
And, uh, we just probably have one more word. I'd like to recognize the folks from the fire department. If you can help to support the event, if you all like to stand, if you all want to support the event. That's all we have now.
How did y'all raise the money?
I'm sorry?
How did you raise the money?
Oh, so, we had coordinated with the Walmart here in Spring Lake, and, uh, we set out a booth out there. We had the tables decorated. Uh, Ms. Wendy Mills back here, she made a sign. Ms. Wendy got standing for it. Beth, you want to stand up? They coordinated the event for us, all right, and, uh, we had the boys do a little bit of scout craft and make these little keychains, right? As part of, if, if, uh, somebody donated enough money, they were able to get a keychain off, you know, off the table, so that helped. And, uh, just, uh, having these boys out there, you know, in the community coming out and, uh, doing what they're supposed to do, doing a good turn daily, right? Uh, that's just, that's what we do in scouts, so, that's how we're able to get that money raised, though.
Alderman, Alderman O'Garrick.
I'd just like to say that, uh, for people that can turn that kind of money in one day, I would like to take some lessons from you. And I want you to understand that, uh, your future's already mapped. All you gotta do is remember what you were taught here, or excuse me, there, and wherever she is, and use that in life. Don't take the easy way out. We scouts anyway. Thank you.
Alderman Cooper.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, um, I would also like to say thank you again, and, um, hopefully, when you all have a fundraiser, you'll let us know so we can support you wholeheartedly.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
No girl scout, thanks again.
Y'all have popcorn, though.
We do. We do popcorn.
Get us some popcorn. I heard about it, no doubt, yeah.
We also sell beef sticks for dollars.
Okay. I heard of the popcorn.
I'm sorry?
Beef sticks?
Beef sticks.
Okay.
Any flavor you want.
All right.
I can say it ranges from, like, a maple spicy bacon flavor.
Speak into the mic, please.
It's a salad.
And so the new beef sticks we got come around, it's like only a dollar, you get them, got this long, almost a foot, and then, uh, you get them pretty much anything you choose, and literally they come from like a smoky spicy bacon flavor to like really bad ghost pepper. Not bad, like, taste bad, but bad, like really hot.
So when is the season that you all start selling? I don't know, girl scout.
Uh, we, we sell them almost right after the beginning of scouting here, so it'd be prior to, uh, Christmas. But what's the dates that we did our selling for? What days do we sell for popcorn, beef sticks, and all that?
It's September through...
So late fall, early?
Through November.
I have a question for you, sir. Uh, that popcorn is packaged, and it comes in a box, with a bunch of packages in there?
Yes, sir. We have, uh, we sell them in tins, boxes. We get them like you get them at the store, in the little...
I'm curious, uh, troop seven seventy-two was here. I still got a case for them. How long is it good for?
Oh, wait a box, 'cause it's good for a couple of years usually.
Okay, thank you. You got, you guys know about cases, right? And when you open them, just come get them.
Yes, sir.
He's buying mine, too.
And, and real quick, I want to recognize, recognize Ms. Carroll from the Spring Lake Fire Department for helping us coordinate the event. And that's all we have, ma'am.
Okay, before you close, you're always invited back to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, whatever other civic duties, uh, if you have planned. Just come on back second, fourth, Monday nights, each month.
Yes, sir.
You all have a great day in school tomorrow. A presentation by, uh, Chief Williams.
Mayor, board, uh, one thing about that story was so great, um, they heard me and Mr. O'Garrick, when we all approved us to put in for the grant, is he was kidding with it, "Hey, can you find that money?" And they come up to me right after, "Hey, we want to raise that money for you." I mean, it was that quick, two weeks ago. And they had been working with Carroll and coming in there and just getting everything together, and it worked out so well. I'm just so proud of those guys for going out there on Sunday and spending half the day out there just raising money. It's just, another hand, that's just great. That's appreciated. This here is a different award. We had one not long ago, um, and this is a different crew, and they accomplished the same thing, and I really want to, um, just show my gratitude to, to a great crew. Uh, on August twenty-sixth, a sea ship was working. They were dispatched to a breathing problem. Uh, when they arrived, they realized that the, the patient wasn't breathing or had no heart, uh, wasn't heart beating at all. Um... Let's see, what was that? Anyway, so they started what they normally do. They started CPR. They worked on this, this, this patient for over twenty minutes inside the home before they moved it out to the hap, to the ambulance, which they got a pulse back, um, and they rode into the hospital with them. Um, and then when they left, she, she, uh, this patient also had, still had heart, heart beat. I know that she lived, um, a while after that. I think she's passed now. This was all the way August. Uh, so many things are going on with hurricanes and stuff. We really haven't been able to get these guys appreciated. Tonight, I want to do that, um, and just show them how much we appreciate what they do and how hard they work, uh, that every life matters. So some of the people we have here, you saw some of them leave there a minute ago, going to another call, but Captain Tim Patterson? Each of these come with a pin that they'll be able to wear on their uniform for a lifesaving, for the lifesaving war. Kimberly Hall just left. She went on another call, so I thought I could get away with it, but it didn't work out. Robbie Johnson? Got back. Torres Marsh? Uh, at the time, he was a lieutenant, but he has now been promoted to, um, captain, which is now captain four. I'll get Kimberly's, uh, tour whenever she gets back. But Kimberly Hall was, she's now lieutenant, and she was in there. Thank you.
Alderman, when I finish. I appreciate that, sir.
Oh, yeah, I'll take care of that. You want, you want to get up here all the way?
Yes, sir. Mr. Gerald.
Yes, Mayor, Board of All Men. Good evening. I have before you tonight the, uh, selection of contractors to demolish the Starlight Motel. Typically, um, these amounts are done by the manager, but being that the Starlight Motel is a high-profile fixture, so fixture in the town, I have before you the proposed bids. One of the three bids, um, they did not have an insurance form, that's S and K, and they are deleted. So the two bids that you have are for New Star Development and T D McGee Company. Uh, if you go through the bid items, uh, you can see the quote, um, one is for forty-six thousand, and that is the T D McGee, and the other is for forty-five thousand, which is New Star Development. So I'm recommending that we go with New Star Development. They have had experience in demolition and site coming up. I'm ready for any questions.
Okay. Alderman Jackson.
Oh.
Uh, let me do it in the order. Alderman Jackson. Mr. Name, I'm sorry, I was overturning, I'm sorry. Then Alderman Sutherland, and then Alderman O'Garrick, in that order. I see it now.
You had the total bid for T D McGee forty-two, forty-six thousand two hundred. What's that thirty-six thousand five hundred four?
That's, um, the alternate to remove the asphalt. Um, that's something the engineering draws are gonna have to say whether or not we should remove that asphalt because of erosion possibilities. So that's a very tricky site to demolish.
So would that be the, if they say it has to be removed, you're doing the forty-six plus the thirty?
It would, it would be seventy something thousand, yes. But it's all dependent upon what the engineer is gonna tell us about mediating that site.
Is that for the second bid as well? Do we have a, a alternate number of other things?
That's the bid. Um, that's the bid for what we have.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, just wanna let you know that I talked with Mr. Porter, the code enforcement officer today about the status, uh, of the project. Um, the, there's, there's no reason for you to delay, uh, this decision to, to award this contract if you see fit. But, um, you've probably noticed that the property owner has done some work on the property. Um, removed some items, might have started, uh, demolition work on the structure. Um, the work seems to have stopped, Mr. Porter, says the reason, um, appears to be that the property owner has sent some of the materials away for an asbestos test, which, uh, makes good sense. And that they have stopped work in the meantime until they get the results of that back. Uh, determine exactly how they need to go about, um, doing the remainder of the work. It is the property owner's responsibility. The town has ordered the property owner to demolish the structure and perform the cleanup. Uh, I think you ought to view this contract, um, if you see fit to award it, as a contingent contract. If the property owner does not follow through within a reasonable period of time to finish what he is supposed to be doing. Um, and I would work with the manager, uh, to make sure that the contract says, uh, that it is contingent and the contractor is not to begin demolition or, uh, and cleanup work unless until the town informs them to do that. Because the property owner has not made reasonable progress in clearing the property.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That was a question I was gonna ask. Is the property's only, uh, responsibility to make sure that, that, uh, demolition is taken care of? I do know it's a, um, I saw, uh, in the town and I'm glad he did send that material out to be tested because that ground will still be there. Um, and one question for, uh, the town manager, one of these contracts, is that the same individuals who did the, for the hurricane, removed some of the debris?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, and that's at T D?
No, it's New Star Development.
New Star Development? And that's the seventy thousand?
No, T D, the one you just said, T D McGee is seventy thousand.
Uh-huh.
New Star Development is forty-five.
Okay, so why would we pay seventy thousand opposed to, I mean, what was the difference?
We're not paying seventy thousand. The, the seventy thousand dollar one is voided because they didn't submit a certificate of insurance.
Okay, so you have two in the package?
Right. Three.
Okay.
Three in the packet. One did not have a certificate of insurance.
Right, so I
That was thrown out.
But I'm talking about that, what you just discussed. So the two that we have here, the forty-six two and the thirty-six five.
Right.
As well as the other one.
Right.
The one that's done work for us and, uh, he brought it back. So again, my portion would be with the two that we're gonna use, cause of them didn't have the insurance. If they're gonna do the same work, why would we pay the seventy thousand? I'm just trying to figure out what's the difference.
All contractors have different bids, so so, so that contractor may have a higher disposal fee cost than the other one.
Okay, but you did do the deal, did you make sure we had three for that request?
Well, one.
One what?
Well, one, uh, even with the website, that one, I could have just done it and paid and done it because of I, I have that authority. But I just brought it to the board because it's high-profile.
What was the amount?
So one is, I think it's a hundred and five thousand. But I brought it to the board though.
That's taxpayer dollars. We just don't do.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
But it is the, uh, responsibility of the, uh, property owners. So if we decide to choose one of these, how will the town be reimbursed for their money?
We would have to put a lien on the property.
On the land force?
Which is why we greatly prefer that the property owner proceed and fulfill, um, his, its responsibilities to clear the property. So that we won't have to have the town's contractor do it and then try to recover the costs.
Right, okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor Proton.
Okay, some of that stuff wasn't answered and I'm not gonna go over it again. Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at the cleanup. Are they gonna be able to down in the water, take that junk up as well as on the other side? Is that all kinds of things made down from the trees?
Right, when we, um, had discussions, uh, with the contractors, that was talked about. Um, we will make an attempt to get most of it out of the trees, but some of that, uh, debris, we won't be able to get because it's that high up in the trees. So you'd have to cut the tree down. And then I don't know if you can cut the tree down because that would ruin the bank of the river. So we'd have to look at that all.
We gotta do something.
Yes, sir.
They, 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 they need to climb trees or something.
Yes, yes, I understand. We, we will talk. Yes, sir.
We got ladders that can go up right in the trees.
Yes, ma'am. I understand. Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
So we're talking about seventy thousand?
No. That's, that's, uh, for that one. Uh, we're at, uh, forty-five. It could possibly be more if we, if they have to go up in the trees, you know? They look at a, basically doing, uh, like six feet up there, but some of that stuff is like twenty, fifty.
So when they finish up, we're gonna be able to just sit there and look and see nothing?
Nothing but trees.
Go there, row and
Trees.
The river.
And trees. Won't be able to see the river because of the trees now. Well, we can't cut the trees off of the bank, sir.
I mean, I'm talking about standing in front of it, looking.
Oh, yes, yes.
Yeah.
That's gone.
And that whole building is gone.
Yes, sir. That's gone.
Is that one a good cleanup?
Yes, sir. I understand.
Who will? I'll have to give them Alder Woman.
Thank you. So, um, how, how are we gonna know what type of communication, first of all, we're gonna have with the owner? And, um, I mean, I, I, I would like to know, you know, what his intentions are and where he is. Um, you know, so that we're not, um, stepping over.
Right, good.
You go ahead.
Yes, good question. Uh, that's kinda where the attorney and Mr. Porter, Porter have been working this case. You know, they have been working with the owner. Uh, and it's just now it's got to the point where I don't know if it's cost prohibitive or they're still having issues with insurance. I'm not sure. But this is just a fail-safe, so if that project stops, we can continue it because it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a vector attractive too. I mean, so you may have snakes in there, hornets in there, so it's just a general unsafe dwelling. So, but back to your question, yes, we're, before we, I mean, once we select the contractor, it doesn't mean we immediately go in. It just means we have a contractor selected. Uh, we're gonna try to work and move forward with the owner. Once that, uh, movement is basically at a stalemate, then the board will get a, um, will get an update or get information with regards to the date and time that we will clean up the site.
And I have one other thing. Um, I, I received an email today, um, and working to the USDA. It has, it says they have flood plain easement opportunities available in North Carolina for, um, private citizens and municipalities. Had, did you look over that to see if any of that would, um, pertain to this situation? So that if we could get money from USDA rather than having it coming from our, you know, our budget, it would be a big help.
Uh, I do know there is some USDA money available. Um, I'm not sure if it's available for demolition.
It does say demolition in the email.
Okay.
That, that email came in this afternoon.
Yes, ma'am.
It does say demolition, uh, it says restoration, including demolition or removal of structures present on the property.
Yes, 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 ma'am.
So if you could let me know if that applies in any way to that, or maybe even some of those structures along Grand Boulevard that, um, are probably not gonna be restored.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Alder Woman Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Working with the property owner and if the demolition does go forward and we happen to choose one of these bids and we put a lien on the property, is the property usable for future reference? What would we do with that property? I know some of it behind the flood area, but what would happen with that property?
Well, the property owner would continue to own the property, but subject to that lien.
Right, if we pay.
And if the current owner were to sell the property, fine, the part of the reason for a new potential owner doing always doing, having a lawyer do a title search is to discover things like an outstanding lien.
Right. Okay, we just kinda make sure for future reference that because we are requesting to be moved, uh, for public safety as well as the rodents and the mosquitoes, that how would the town, their money?
There, there are, e- eventually, if, if the town's contractor ends up doing this work and the town pays the contractor, then we place the lien on the property. Um, if we're unable to, to, um, secure payment to satisfy the lien, then there are enforcing revenues. It's like a foreclosure.
So you'll be, uh, corresponding back and forth and with the, uh, property owner again, let us know all of that.
It's in Mr. Porter's, um, court and he, he has been talking with the property owner. And trying to work with the property owner and within reason to give them, it's been a lot of rain and all that, obviously, you all know that. Um, he's going to give the property owner reasonable opportunities to, um, bring his property back into, uh, safety condition.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. And in addition to that, um, I have a conversation this afternoon with debris now down on Highway Two Ten. Obviously, that is not, uh, for the full problem, but it is a result of the overall impact on the environment. Not that we can do anything about it, but we must also be aware, uh, that the flooding and the damage has long range effect downstream. And if asbestos is upstream, it obviously will be downstream. And perhaps, uh, we along with the county can, can find a remedy for that. Just giving you a beautiful picture. Board, are you ready? Is there a motion? Yes, the mo- the motion is to, or, or the question is to approve a project to be an exit. Alder Woman Jackson.
I'm making a motion that
Hold on a bit. Hold on a second.
Uh, to approve the, um, to approve the low bid by New Star Development.
I'm making a motion that we approve the bid by New Star Development.
Alder, uh, Mayor Proton or Gavin?
Sir.
Then we'll be the second that we, uh, offer the bid or accept the bid by New Star Development. You heard the motion. Are you ready for the question?
Question.
Uh, unreadiness? Alder Woman Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is that answer, is that, as we just stated, went over about five, ten, fifteen minutes?
We'll make sure.
Right, we're making a motion, but we had all these discussions about the reason why we shouldn't give it, so
You all.
You supposed to brought it back to us to let us know what the, uh
It, it's fine to do this now. Um, it is
So they're not gonna move forward until those questions that were asked?
We will make, what you all are doing, if you see fit to do it, is to award the contract. Um, when we work with the contractor to draft the contract.
Right, you write that back to the board.
That's right. Well, we'll notify you.
We normally look at the contract when we, uh, there's no contract in here.
No.
It's just, uh
No contract yet.
Right, so, but normally when we, uh, we look at the contract to approve the contract. I mean, we do, but if y'all wanna do it different, I'm gonna thank the other ones, but, uh, is that two on the list?
You're basically administratively giving the manager authority to
I hear you. I hear you.
It's given to him.
But I hear you.
And we will make sure that
We would like to see that this, this Cooper state will wanna see what's going on as well. Because we've made a discussion, we've talked about different things that the board is concerned about. And I understand that we're awarding a bid with bidding, but we still want to stay on top of it as well to see what's going on of the discussions that Bron should have in her bench that we've all stayed.
Happy to send a copy to you for your information.
Right.
Board is extra.
Follow that.
And it, and it'll be clear that it's, um, that word is not began by the contractor unless until the town provides notice.
Right.
You heard the motion and discussion. So the favor, make it known by the sign, aye?
Aye.
How many ayes we get this way?
So I thought it was unanimous.
Unanimous? Okay. Most would therefore care. But you all change your mind. Thank you. Alder Man. Okay, uh, we're now ready to hear from Mr. Christian before the last words.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'd like to acknowledge the passing of Miss Verna Owens. Miss Verna Owens was a longtime resident of this town for seventy-one plus years. She was a hundred and five years old. Uh, she was just a month shy of, uh, celebrating her hundred and sixth birthday. Miss Owens worked in the school cafeteria in a local elementary school. And she worked for the Chamber of Commerce and she worked for the Kiwanis Club. And she did a lot of work for the seniors and the seniors here in Red Center. They, they still remember her and a lot of people still remember Miss Owens. As a matter of fact, when I came back from the, uh, first call for, uh, she was working for the Spring Lake News and my father went to her and, uh, arranged for one of the reporters to appear to, uh, interview me, you know, which is the, um, twenty-nine-year-old soldier. Um, she used to write for the Faber Observer, a column called My Kind of Town from ninety-nine to two thousand and four, where she, uh, wrote about Spring Lake, uh, every week. Um, in two thousand and four, Mayor Clark designated her as the Spring Lake poet laureate for our town. Um, he actually, if you look her up on, on, uh, Facebook, you can actually see her doing her poetry and actually rapping songs. It was incredible at her age that she could do that. She entered senior games, uh, she won two hundred and fifty medals in senior games in basketball, football, softball, track and field, bowling and, and billiards. Um, so I wanted to, to, uh, recognize Miss Owens and, uh, I'm hoping the town will release an official statement to recognize her. Um, I think it was an oversight, but we haven't done it yet, but I'm hoping we'll do that. Release the statement to the newspaper and recognize her officially. Um, when she turned a hundred, Mayor Chris Ray, uh, wrote a proclamation, acted in response to her proclamation. We gave her a proclamation on behalf of the Board of Aldman as Miss Verna Owen Day. And we did the same thing when she turned a hundred and five last year, this time last year. Uh, if we want a bright future, we can't ignore the past. And it's important that we remember, we remember the past to have a bright future. So I'd like to recognize Miss Verna Owen passing away and, uh, she's in heaven now. She's in a better place and, uh, I'll personally miss her. Thank you.
Thank you. Well said. And we shall do what we, what we can, but we will ask that you take the lead on that and we'll follow you since you were so close.
All right.
And we would gladly be a step with you as the board, as the mayor and as the council.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
Any of us who know and remember things about this over. But thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Yes, sir. We appreciate your passion. Yes, sir. Uh, Alder Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good to be able to say thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, um, before you finish, we would have to have you back.
Well, thank you.
Uh, we both.
Well, the fact that this work that, um, God has called me to do, some people think that I'm crazy that I've served so long. Well, in fact, it's the work that, uh, God has called me to do, some people think that I'm crazy that I've served so long. But I have rested and am still resting and still healing, but I thought I would make an attempt to come out to the board meeting tonight, and I want to, um, thank our troops, um, for raising the money, and Chief Williams, I do believe if you work as a team, you can always get great things accomplished. But if you try to say aye, 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 nothing will be accomplished, we're stronger as a team, and I know, you know that. Um, my husband always said, there's no aye in team, and certainly have learned that in order for us to go forward and continue to go forward, and I state this all the time, we have to work as a team and stop pulling so far apart. I did receive, um, quite a bit of thank you cards, and I thanked the town. I had my surgery on the twenty-ninth, my birthday was on the thirty-first. Didn't know that I was still here, but I was here because I was in so much pain. My daughter came down to take care of me, and my grandkids, everybody's just been so great, my church. So on my birthday, they sent me some flowers from the town, so I said that was my birthday gift, but it was the flowers. But just stating, um, received many cards, but when I went and walked to my mailbox to get some fresh air, I had received this card, and it touched my heart, and it brought tears to my eyes, and I just kept it close by me. As well as one, another one that really touched my heart was from one of my church members. It says, "If anybody can do this, you can do this." So I kept looking at that because it's been hard and still hard, but I have been physical therapy. Um, started last week, but it says from the Spring Lake Fire Department, Spring Lake, North Carolina. Never seen the seal, beautiful seal, but I must read it because it did touch my heart and it continued to give me strength. It says, "Alderman Sullivan, on behalf of the Fire Chief Jason Williams and the entire Spring Lake Fire Rescue Department, we would like to express our warmest thoughts and best wishes for a speedy recovery. Hope you will be feeling better very soon. We have missed seeing you around," my daughter started laughing. "Know you are in our thoughts and prayers. Thank you for your service to our community." That certainly touched my heart because sometimes people think this as a, a easy job. This job is not meant for everybody, you can run for it if you want to, but it's not meant for everybody to be a town council member. Because some people think it's thankless, we make a motion, make a motion, make a motion. Think about the motions that we make, because you have to do your homework, you have to understand what the materials is because we affect thirteen thousand to seventeen thousand members with, with, uh, hope when we make decisions. Decisions that I always say that I make today, that are not so quick, and I have to know what I'm doing, will affect our citizens ten years down the road, uh, tomorrow. So again, working as a team, and I always say, everybody in Spring Lake is so important. I don't care what their economics are, I don't care how they live or whatever. They put me in their seat, I have no respective person, everybody is important. So to say that to the Spring Lake Fire Department, when you all go into individual's houses, you don't say, "Well, I'm not going in this house," for whatever reason, you go in. So again, I wanna thank you for what you do, I thank our, uh, citizens, as well as all of our, uh, employees for the great work that you do, and I certainly appreciate it because if I'm laying there and I'm calling nine-one-one, as you stated, that it took that individual fifteen to twenty minutes to bring him back to life, I need you to be there. So again, do know that I appreciate you, and I'm pretty sure the whole board member appreciates everything that you all do. Thank you for this opportunity, Mayor.
Item number, item number seven on the adjournment, Alderman Cooper?
I'm making a motion that we adjourn.
Mayor Portimao Gavin?
I second that motion.
It has been moved and sectioned, we adjourned. Your first motion, are you ready for the question?
Question.
All the favor sign as aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed, sign as a net. Unanimous as well, we are hereby adjourned. Thank you all.